All right, so since um why we'll um we'll open with we'll just follow the agenda with regard to as it's set out and um get right to it. Is Jerry on?
I don't know Jerry will make it tonight. He had to um take his mother to an appointment.
Okay, that's fine. I understand. Okay.
You want me to let them in?
Michelle Brendan, how is everybody? So just before we open, I know I spoke with Brendan about this last night, Michelle. You got I had forwarded the memo that we received from KP Law Attorney John. Eichmann.
When did you forward it?
Well, over a week or so ago, so okay.
I don't think I got it.
I didn't get it.
Well.
Me either.
Brendan, you got it?
Yes.
Okay, um I I didn't send it to you Kathy.
Okay.
The reason I didn't send it to you was um I didn't want it. I wanted it. I didn't want it to be formally submitted for possible. It was still in a draft. It was still considered John believed it to be a still in a so how do I want to put it? Draft of sorts? So um but we'll we'll go over it. I think given that let me see if I can find it and send it to.
Herber A C email?
Uh, it's been so long. It I know it went after the other meeting had gotten canceled. Michelle, very quickly, give me a email address for you.
Um, his first name, his first name dot last name. So what I have on screen on Gmail.
Okay. Um, while we're talking, I will um forward it. In short, um, it addresses the issue as to whether or not the zoning Board of Appeals has can have authority to grant a special permit for the activity at Flush, which involves effectively toilets and or waste transfer and ultimately being brought for disposal. Because in the bylaws, toilets is set out as a prohibited activity. And the position taken by counsel for the um petitioner, this case um Nichols, or if you want to think of it as seventy five Main Street made the put the position forward that over the history of the property, that being seventy five Main Street, there's been any number of continuing legal but um uh nonconforming uses being practiced and performed at that site. And they've been open and obvious. And they had never been cited, but at the same time, none of the occupants who were performing them ever sought a special permit. So eventually Flush takes the property and begins their essentially nonconforming um use, that being toilets and or the waste transfer attendant to the cleaning of the portable toilets.
Yeah.
By making a showing, then then they get cited by town inspector and it leads us to where we are right now. And on its face, it looks like a prohibited activity because it involves toilets or the use of or however, because it's only stated as toilets in our bylaw that stated it was a prohibited activity. As a prohibited activity, the board has no power to grant permitting because it's simply hard and fast, black and white prohibited. Nonconforming, however, we do have the ability to add um allow for a special permit. We've done it in the past in various capacities. They made the took the position that because the property had always been used for nonconforming uses that Flush just continued the same pattern of nonconforming use, which is legal in the idea that it isn't prohibited by law. Legal being, if you want to think of it as, you know, drug dealing or, you know, storing weapons or whatever you however you want to think of that which is legal or illegal. Uh, KP Law Town Council in the person of John Eichmann um took that analysis, researched it, looked at their case site and agreed that if the Board of Appeals has the discretion to believe that there has been a nonconforming use and that this they have established and made a showing that this is a pattern of activity or behavior over the term of the property. And it preceded the bylaws enactment, which is somewhat not always required, but it is all the more compelling. Then the then the board is entitled to consider the current activity by the current tenant, that being Flush, as just a continuation of legal but nonconforming use, which has never been permitted. And in this case, we would be allowed to grant a special permit under our discretion and we would have authority to do that. So it effectively seemingly morphs a prohibited activity into a nonconforming one. Now, it's noteworthy to say that those prior nonconforming um uses weren't the same as the one that Flush is involved with now. But they weren't always the same from one tenant or occupant or user from to the next. At one point, there was storage of building materials. At another point, it was automotive use. Fluids were being stored that otherwise may not have been permitted. Glues, epoxies, things like that. So their assertion that this is just a continuing legal but nonconforming use has grounds. But it does again lie within the discretion of the board. And that's the case that um the appallant or petitioner, if you want to think of it for purposes of the appeal of the Building Commissioner um has to make. And as they will very likely make again during their request for a special use permit, if we are to find that the use of the property by Flush is not a prohibited use, but a reasonably established nonconforming use. And that's where we come in, the grant of discretion upon that consideration. Brendan, is that how you see it, read it?
That's how I read it, yes.
So um let me get it over to it's not a very long memo. It's a rather concise one. Um, but as the meeting opens, um we first have to deal with the appeal matter. And on its face, they weren't permitted, whether it's prohibited or nonconforming, it's noteworthy to say that they had no permit um for the activity at the site, even though Jerry cited them for a prohibited one. It's still the question is, was it a reasonable and legitimate um uh notice to cease and desist? Regardless, and if it were believed to be, even if it were believed to be a prohibited activity, that doesn't stop them or prevent them from making an assertion that it was nonconforming in their seeking of a special permit on their second matter on the agenda tonight. So this is how the um this is very likely how they'll proceed tonight. So um Kathy, why don't you open the meeting and I will um try to get this over to um Michelle? Hello and good evening. My name is Bob Green. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Excuse me, Thursday, November fourteenth uh twenty twenty four. Uh, the board is gathered tonight. Brendan Riley and Michelle Bodian are present, thereby establishing quorum for the um for the evening. And we have um several agenda items that um we're going to attempt to um proceed and go forward with. So um in the immediate, I'm just trying to address something. Brendan, if you have the agenda in front of you, can you uh read the hearing notice for the matter uh involving two ninety nine Main Street?
Sure, just pull that up.
Thank you.
I'll share Brendan.
Got it. Uh, virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty four at seven P M on the petition of Victor Olivera for a special use permit to run a landscaping business to be located in the Highway Business District at two ninety nine Main Street, North Reading, Mass. Map twelve parcel one twenty eight in accordance with two hundred dash thirty nine D of the North Reading zoning bylaws.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. Um Kathy, or to the gathered audience, is anybody here from two ninety nine Main Street?
Well, I'm Victor Olivera.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Oh. Uh, are you ready to proceed? I'm I know there's some been some changes within regard. I've been made aware of there's been some changes to the um the property, if you might want to take a moment to um to alert the board as to what the status of your
Yes, sorry. Uh, this is my first time doing this. Sorry.
Um, sure.
So I I believe he sold the building or maybe it's a pending sale. And it's possible I may not be occupying it, but um if the sale falls through, then I hope to to be the person to occupy it. Um, or if the new owner is willing to rent to me. Um, my plan is to run my small landscaping and masonry business out of it. Um, you know, store pavers, some small, you know, materials. Um, nothing crazy. I'm not looking to, you know, have people come every every half hour to buy materials, mostly for me and my my crew.
Okay, so um, thank you. So in the immediate, um, you you still don't know if you're going to be on site.
Um, if I occupy, if I'm going to be on site all the time?
No, I mean, you
I get it.
I'm trying to figure. Are you? Are you going to be the tenant? Is that?
I hope to be, but as of right now, I don't know. Um, I'm staying with this meeting just in case, you know, I can still be the tenant. That way we don't have to go through all of this because obviously I put in a lot of work to to make this happen um and money. So I would love to have it happen, but I don't know yet.
Do you have a timeline of any kind with regard to the owner?
No, at the moment, no. It was supposed to be as soon as possible. Um, you know, if this meeting went well, I was gonna move in the next day.
So uh there might is it's practical. We can continue the matter just over to our December meeting. And that'll be um while I've got everybody, um, we if everybody could take a moment on the board to check their respective calendars, we usually meet the second or third Thursday of the month. So uh December nineteenth, uh Michelle uh Brendan, uh, does that look like a good meeting?
Works for me.
Brendan?
That works for me as well.
Okay, so uh you know, we can continue the matter till December nineteenth. That'll give you opportunity to resolve. I mean, it's without having any entitlement to the property, I'm not even sure we can act on your behalf. It's
Yeah, I understand.
So I but at the same time, you won't have, I mean, the same the same filing that you made today would just be opened and be um heard on again December nineteen.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, if that's the best way to to do it, I'm open for, you know, whatever's easier for everyone and the right way to do it.
Well, thank you. So and uh I would like to note that once you when you know the spec with any with regard to any proposal or um our request to the board and ask, if you will, filing, the better the detail, the more specific is always appreciated by us because it it allows us to um best consider all aspects of it and um in that regard, and don't hesitate to while you're putting that together um to access uh the Building Inspector and and making inquiries of him because he knows the code and and the bylaws and the activities of the town as well, if not better than most people than anybody else. So if you have any questions about setup or um things that are permitted, I'm sure I'd be more than happy to um give you some assistance. But so um so by your uh so you just for the formality, um, are you are if you want to just request a continuance till December nineteenth um for further hearing on the matter, we'll just consider that now.
Yeah, I'll definitely request that for the nineteenth of December. Um, and hopefully I get information by then.
Okay, um uh, does anybody want to bring a motion to allow the continuance?
I bring a motion to allow the continuance to carry over to the next meeting.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor of granting the continuance for um the matters revolving two ninety nine Main Street?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Bob Green, I. Okay, Mr. Olivera, uh, Olivera, is it Olivera?
Olivera.
Okay, Olivera, thank you. Um, well, you'll be the um you should be the first matter on for December nineteenth. And again, um if there's any information that you need, don't hesitate to reach out and I'm sure we can um have people get back to you and make sure that everything goes and keeps with your plan. But again, I think again, um this your status with the landlord is is first and foremost.
Correct. Yeah, I agree. Everything was great up until a few days ago. So it really disappointed me, but hopefully things work out.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Good luck.
All right. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
You. Uh, our next matter, um, a continued virtual public hearing uh will be held on Thursday, November fourteenth at seven P M on the petition of Sean Nichols for the property at seventy five Main Street, North Reading, Mass. Map twenty three parcel thirty one on an appeal of the decision of the Building Commissioner for the denial of the use of the property for toilets, portable rental and leasing in the and leasing in the Highway Business District according to section two hundred dash thirty nine of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Um, well, the record is um Mr. Nichols and in this case counsel uh with us this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Green. Yes, Jill Mann here in behalf of Flush and Sean Nichols, and I do see that Sean Nichols is present.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Nichols. Good to see you again. Uh, so uh I know that there's been uh conversations back and forth. Uh, this matter got continued over to afford the board opportunity to access uh counsel, uh, that being Town Council, uh, firm of KP Law and in particular Attorney Jonathan Eichmann um to just determine um what our staff, what our authorities and abilities are in this matter as well as um the concerns and or petition uh um positions being brought by um uh in this case, um, Mr. Nichols at seventy five Main, um, in particular by Attorney Mann. Uh if you might for the for the moment, uh, counsel, um, you might want to, if you could, if you could just relate um any conversations you had or uh any um information that might be relevant to um uh the matter with regard to the cited violation.
Sure, of course. Thank you, Mr. Green. Um basically with regard to the appeal of the Building Inspector's decision, the Building Inspector, when he did issue the cease and desist, did note that this particular use is prohibited under current bylaw, but that he did reserve um in favor of the applicant, the ability to show him evidence that the use is actually lawfully existing. Now, what we have done when we demonstrated and provided this board with a full explanation of all the historic uses, which were nonconforming uses, we provided information that doesn't necessarily, that doesn't prove that the bylaw doesn't say that this use is prohibited, but rather proves that the existing uses at the property at the time Flush took over were legally existing nonconforming uses. And what the discussions had been with Attorney Eichmann was in fact that while the board isn't allowed to grant a use variance for a prohibited use, they are most certainly allowed to say that this particular use by Flush back in two thousand fourteen was in fact an extension or continuation and a change in an existing legally nonconforming use that was not more substantial or in terms of what your bylaw says was less objectionable than the then current uses. So that provided the board with the ability to actually say that this use is allowed. So in my opinion, while we can't prove that this is a permitted use because it's clearly not, we have been able to give the board evidence that it could in fact be a special permit use pursuant to um the nonconformity provisions that are contained within your bylaw as well as the statutory provision set forth under section six. So it's 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 a strange dynamic. So when you look at the Building Inspector's decision, we you have to file an appeal of it. And the way you do, you have to require that the decision be reversed. That's just the statutory steps you have to take or the legal steps you have to take. So it isn't necessarily overturning his decision as much as this is looking at the provision that says, well, show me how it is an allowed use, which I believe we have um based on the later application for a special permit use or a special permit extension under the nonconformity provisions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I know the board had opportunity to review and and in kind, the 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 initial opinion um by in this case counsel to the that being Attorney Eichmann on behalf of KP Law. And uh, but in the immediate, the 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 question as to whether or not the underlying citation, we're dealing, I know that you're on the agenda tonight to request a special permit and basically, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but your summary just a moment ago speaks towards that as much as um the overall, the end, the the macro view of this. Uh, does the board have any questions for Attorney Mann with regard to uh in the immediate, the um the uh the the decision of the Building Commissioner for denial of the use of the property in at at on the time of the citation?
I don't have any questions. I guess I'm just wondering procedurally, is that the right order or do we jump into the special use permit? Because then the appeal would be nullified.
Well, on that, uh, and in and this is a for the record, it's a conversation I had with Attorney Mann uh about that. Uh, and I followed that up with the question to again Town Council. Uh, in effect, if if the board were to uh find in favor of the um Building Inspector that the um the denial for the use of the toilet uh was violation of specifically two hundred dash thirty nine, would that limit us um in our ability to then consider it for a special permit? Because um I apologize, I'm reaching for my binder now. Um are we citing it for being a prohibited use or for a continuing um legal nonconforming uh use? And that distinction could be uh, I didn't want, I wanted to be sure that that in and of itself wouldn't be um uh limiting uh for purposes of trying to consider the merits of a special permit. Uh, by Attorney Eichmann's consideration of that question, he didn't think it was that uh that to be considered that that the Building Inspector at the time of the citation uh wasn't aware that this particular property uh could be used for um that the activity could be a legal um legally permitted, nonconforming use as opposed to what he believed was the citation in the um in the um bylaws, that specifically being uh two hundred dash thirty nine, section C, item uh five, six, two, nine, nine, uh, which is prohibited, uh, which again, if that wouldn't prevent the board from considering it uh for this actually have having been nonconforming, legally nonconforming. So uh I believe that the finding of the um I would, I I mean, it's open for discussion, but I think Inspector Jerry Neal, Jerry O'Neill's fight um citation for a cease and desist was appropriate uh at that time, based upon what he knew. And um so I'm in, so I would the way I see it in this matter, um, a cease and desist, um the citation was appropriate and in order of cease and decision uh is it is is required.
I think that it's I think it is. I think we discussed this. It's like a distinction without difference. So it's it's it the citation, the cease and desist. Um the basis of it was inappropriate, was appropriate, excuse me, because it specifically is prohibited. However, the cease and desist doesn't apply because as he noted in his his email, his letter, he says, therefore, unless you can provide document proof that this was an allowed use by the town, then you are required to cease and desist. So I think that the decision, the 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 decision would be, I think, to Ms. Bodian's point, would be more of, yes, this is a specifically prohibited. I think we spoke about this, Mr. Green. It is a specifically prohibited use. And this is not a use that is allowed in town. End of story. However, the applicant has presented information that the board wants to consider in determining whether or not it is an allowed use and therefore the cease and desist would not stand. So it's kind of like a it it's an odd, it's an odd way to look at it. But I so I almost wonder if that's kind of the decision. And then I think to Ms. Bodian's point, you kind of table the final, you talk about the special permit. Then you go back to the um to the cease and desist. Does that make sense to the board?
Yeah, that's how I was thinking about it. I mean, if we end up finding this was, you know, uh, nonconforming use historically, then I agree that nullifies the cease and desist order, and then we might find differently whether or not we're upholding that. So I think we have to take the merits first on whether this was historic, nonconforming use. And then we can go to the second question about then, therefore, it's a cease and desist valid.
Right. And I think Mr. Green's point and Mr. and Attorney Eichmann's point was is to make certain on Right. And I think Mr. Breen's point and Mr. and Attorney Eichmann's point was is to make certain on the record that everybody understands this individual use without further explanation is specifically prohibited.
Yeah, I yeah, I agree. And I think
Right, well.
three times that you also.
I get it.
The um the the and again, this is, we're all all um we're all kind of limited by the language. Uh when my read of uh the the fi uh the position taken by the town inspector was to make a showing, there's, there was no at no time did Flush obtain a permit. So it in other words, I I understand what we're doing here. It's it's this odd little um chicken and an egg in a sort of way kind of thing, which is, which comes first. Uh and I am more than happy to discuss the particulars of the evolution of the property that uh supports the position taken by, in this case, Attorney Mann on behalf of of um of uh Mr. Nichols that on its face, it was it would seem to have been prohibited, but it was actually just a continuing uh continuing legal um nonconforming um nonper unpermitted, non, non, nonperforming um activity as opposed to a flat out prohibited one. So that's where this is a unique um situation. And I have no problem if the board wants to get into the particulars of that conversation because uh then we we move towards the memo submitted by counsel uh to show the history. Uh which I know with the prior meeting you recited, um but that's the supporting um the necessary supporting documentation or um that is meant to persuade the position of the board that it really was one thing as opposed to another, uh those two things being nonconforming or outright prohibited. So um so with regards to that, um if you want to just very, I know you just momentarily went through it, but if you want to give a com uh any comment, uh counsel with regard to the um your understanding of the property without having to go into the entire history. But if you, I know it, I know you researched back to, I'm trying to find I I believe you had an exhibit that had prior um occupant uses.
Oh, I went back pretty far. Sure. Yeah, I mean, I went back. I looked back all the way to forty-nine and and had to look back even further for the zoning map, et cetera. But I I I will give a very brief summary because I recognize that last time I was, I was um more detailed and went through everything. And I think the board and with the assistance of Attorney Eichmann has had the ability to kind of understand what what the position is of this particular applicant. Um so in in that vein, what I had done to be, so what I needed to prove is I needed to prove that the uses of the property at the time Flush took over had been legally existing but nonconforming. So I had to prove that the uses at one point in time had been permitted when they started at the property and that through the evolution of changes in your bylaw and or by your zoning map, that those changes became one prohibited or two permitted by special permit only. So under the law, if if a use is permitted by a special permit, but it had been legally existing at the time, and then all of a sudden a special permit requirement came in, that use is deemed to be a legally existing, nonconforming use. So all legally existing, nonconforming means is at the time it started, it was legal. And then sometime down the road, the town said it's no longer permitted by right. And 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 I don't know if when you looked at what the information I had given to you, the bylaws were crazy at one point. It was like it was a triangle. At one point, something was permitted. Then it said it's not permitted. Then it said it was permitted by a special permit. Then it said it was permitted. Then it said it was not permitted or special permit. I I mean, in about a five-year period of time, the bylaw bounced a lot. Um and then even created districts that didn't exist and created uses that were permitted in those districts. That was the industrial park, if you remember the footnote in my um my particular uh brief. So that being said, I did discuss um some of the elements with John Eichmann because we wanted to make sure, look, John, do you agree that the board first and foremost, because this is the most important part, that you as members actually had the authority to even consider this type of an argument? And Jonathan said, yes, a hundred percent you do. Your nonconforming um section of your bylaw gives you the authority to do this, to actually say Flush's use was an extension of a legally existing, nonconforming use and that you have the authority to actually grant a special permit for that because absent that, what's the point of even going further? So you first, you do have the authority, Attorney Eichmann confirmed it. Second, I needed to give to Jonathan in this legal memo and to you, the board members, evidence of all of these um uses and what they were historically. And were any of them subsequently prohibited? And there were. You know, for example, outdoor storage was specifically prohibited when in fact it was a use at the property. Residential use specifically prohibited when it was a use at the property. And while you'd say, well, a residential use is not bad in industrial district, it's actually terrible in an industrial district because of the impact on a homeowner, the impact on industrial properties. That's one of the big no-no's. Um when you're trying to rezone and you have legally existing uses. Um so and that use continued for decades after it was specifically prohibited in your bylaw. As was the outdoor storage component. Um so I I didn't go through that. And if you have questions, I'll give you more detail. But what the bylaw says and what the statute, which is section six of of forty A says, is if you have an existing, nonconforming use, it doesn't have to necessarily say the same exact use. If you go back to the board and you say, look, I want to make a change. I want to make an alteration. If the board determines that that use is, in your case, less objectionable than the prior use or under state law, which is substantially the same, is not more substantially detrimental, then the board, and it's a discretionary thing, the board can actually issue that special permit. Um so that's really kind of the case law in a nutshell in what Attorney Eichmann and I discussed. And um you know, whether Attorney Eichmann and I, you know, he decides that it is a use, that's up to you. You have the power to actually see what those uses were and whether or not this is less objectionable and less detrimental. Um you know, we would suggest to this board that when Flush took over, you know, the building inspector at the time knew Flush was taking over. He knew it was a portable toilet company. He knew that it was prohibited. And he allowed it because he thought it was less objectionable. Should this have gone before the board? Oh, slightly, yes. Um I'm not going to run from that. Um but it didn't. And it as a result of that, Mr. Crusoe bought the property and has been operating there for twelve years. Um so everybody kind of knew that this was not a specifically permitted use and in fact prohibited, but an extension of a legally permitted use. I mean, pardon me, I sorry, an extension of a nonconforming use. We would suggest this is truly less objectionable and substantially less detrimental than any other use that could go there. And why we say it or any other use that was prior, for example, a tree removal company, a construction company, those can be heavy uses. They have a lot of diesel. They back up, they beep, a lot of different reasons that they're not, they're not um as favorable as a company like Flush, which is almost completely passive. Um Flush's business has never ever received a complaint by a neighbor, by a town board. They've always provided services to the town. They've been a phenomenal participant in the town's um, you know, business fiber. They really have been. And that's what we believe leads us to the whole conclusion and helps this board hopefully come to the conclusion that this use is less objectionable at the time it was begun. And that, you know, the use as it exists today continues to be less objectionable because the use has remained the same. Um there's no noxious materials, there's no odors. The traffic burden is very low. There's no high demand. There's no people coming in and out. Um and basically, that's all what's cited in the memo to support those findings. Um I think I probably talked too long, Mr. Breen, but um if I, if if either Mr. Riley or Ms. Bodian have questions or if you have questions, um you know, I can, I can refer you to the sections of the statute, the bylaw, whatever other information you would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I know there's a, an array of other mem uh party um uh members of the community have thought they could be related to Flush, if not, they, I mean, excuse me, um seventy-five Maine to uh or Flush it uh actually. Um does any uh, does anybody within the audience, as I'll just refer to it tonight, have anything additional to add to it, add to Attorney Mann's or something unique or different from what she has said? I I'm not, uh respectfully, I'm not at issue. I'm not, I there, I don't, I would offer that. And I have said, stated this, I think, since the very, uh probably the second time this matter uh was heard uh 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 continuing. Um I would also agree that from everything I have been able to gather, uh Flush LLC has been nothing but a um a very strong and um well-run and and considered um appreciated uh business in the North Reading community. So I don't think that that is at issue here tonight. What we're trying to deal with specifically is has less to do with the business of Flush as it does the the use of the property. Uh so I I don't want to um I want to stay on point because that is the matter that really the board is is considering here. It's not the merit of the business as opposed to our authority and ability to um make a decision with regard to the use of the property as set forth within the bylaws as well as um Massachusetts law. So again, but I do want, if anybody has anything to add that may not have been considered by counsel or have the board may not have heard that has something more specific, um please by all means, um uh feel free to um offer that during the um during the public hearing. Uh Michelle, Brendan, uh any questions or concerns or thoughts with regard to um the matter as it's proceeded so far?
No, appreciate the thorough explanation this time and last and all the documents.
Yeah, I have no additional questions, Bob. I appreciate counsel's time.
Thank you.
So again, I think, so if the idea here is that at the outset of this matter, when it first came before us, uh it looked black and white in so very many regards because as I cited under um section C, that being uh noted item, uh sorry, I'm glancing over as I talk. Big mistake. Uh five, six, two, nine, nine, basically toilets have and portable renting and leasing as having that a prohibited act, uh prohibited under the bylaws. And I I will I will agree with Attorney Mann that the bylaws have have quite often, as is the te, as the case with a lot of communities, shifted one way and another on different matters and different items. And so it it raised the, it it seemed clear in in black and white. But as has been discussed and noted here, the history of the property, the long history of the property that preceded uh the enactment of the bylaws, um obviously needed to be considered. So for the board, um as this, as we are still within the public hearing, essentially, the, we have to believe that uh that the use that it's now oc uh taking up is one that is not, is one that can best be considered as not prohibited by the intention of our bylaws, but one which was um in this case, as phrased by counsel, um lawful, pre-existing but nonconforming. And and since no prior occupants sought a special permit, which would have, in theory, limited the the actual use at that property, both for them and in theory, anybody going forward after that, um is 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 just a you know, an interesting um facet of this entire matter. So uh for Michelle and and Brendan specifically, you know, what is your, do you have any thoughts with regard to the 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 crisscross of our bylaws uh on this? Because on the one hand, if a a company walked into North Reading today and said, I want to open up a toilet rental business on a property that had never been used for any similar use or anybody had, you know, they didn't have the same history as in this case seventy-five Main Street did. My belief is is that that wouldn't be permitted because of, again, section C of uh two hundred dash thirty-nine. But this is almost a standalone situation, as I think I described uh when I was talking to um Town Council. And does that, you know, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm not too worried about the precedent that could be set here. I mean, I think there was a good faith effort at the time they moved in. Um I think if someone new to town walked in and decided to start using a property that's expressly prohibited, kind of renter beware or buyer beware. Um and I think we'd proceed with a notice of violation. Um but in this case, it sounds like at the time they entered the site, they were in communication with the town, you know, probably were aware of the history of the uses and thought it was um, you know, allowed or nonconforming. So I'm at least I'm not too concerned about the precedent.
Brendan?
I would agree. I I've, I feel that um as a history here with this site, whereas if someone else were to come in and uh request a special permit, uh I I don't see that being a, being a concern.
So on this point specifically, um from my conversations with Town Council, and I um related this as well, when I spoke with Ms. Attorney Mann, the um the the history, it it is, this is, if this board were to believe, decide that what would otherwise be a prohibited use was actually just, again, a pre-legal, pre-existing, nonconforming uh use. Um that all but limits any future um application unless they could find a property that si was as similarly situated as this one was. That's not to say that there isn't one. I mean, I often wonder at during this matter, if there's just any number of businesses that are active in the in the town that don't have permitting. But um that we just, there's no way for us to know. It's also, it's all but dependent upon um you know, public awareness and or the um uh the overview of the uh building inspector. But in this case, and whether it's just um fortunate for, in this case, Flush, none of the prior occupants, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Mann, ever sought a special permit that limited any future nonconforming use. So they just, it went from one to the next to the next and this business was done. This business had been uh enacted there. I mean, I don't think I saw that you had found anybody else that had a special permit. And that's also speaks to what A special permit and that's also speaks to what Inspector O'Neill said, you know, if you can show us a permit. You could, uh, my understanding is flush couldn't show one, but neither could, in theory, any of the prior occupants.
That's correct. There is, there are no special permits relative to this property. None. There's, there's no permitting history.
Go ahead, sure. Uh, so. For the board. You know, the analysis that was. And draw it down some notes from, and it speaks to what Town Council pointed out. You know. It, it all, all but seems to. Center on the idea that. Is this activity that flush would be? One that would be. In theory, not only less objectional than any prior use, but. One that. That. That the. That would be supported or. You know. Not as much welcome, but acceptable to the community as a, as a whole. And that's kind of the question that I think the board should also have to be considered here. I mean, there is some elements and I think I'm, I'm gonna. It might turn to this in the immediate, but there is the matter of the, the activity of the. The transfer of the. The contents of the, the portable toilets. On. At seventy-five main and maybe. Uh, whether it's. Mr. Nichols or attorney or counsel that might want to. Better. For my benefit, tell me what that entails on a daily basis.
Sure. I'm going to give you a general overview and then I'm going to ask Sean to just give you more specifics. So in general, the property, there's absolutely no, um, no, um. Unclean toilets brought back to the property. They're cleaned off-site. When they come, they are just pieces of equipment. There is no. There is absolutely no material. It's, they're clean. So what ends up happening is there is a pumping trailer. So there, his service vehicles come back. They pump, you have to. It's still a process where you have to pump and you have to comply with Board of Health requirements. So the, the portable toilets and or trailers are pumped into small septic. Pumping trucks and it's brought to the property and put in a trailer, but that is not stored overnight. They are emptied every day. And it's, it's, there's less material here than are probably transported through the streets. Of North Reading because it's, it's a septic community and we all have septic systems that have to be pumped, you know, once a year. And that's subject to rigid, rigid control and those septic companies have to bring the materials off-site to a licensed facility. So I'm going to let Mr. Nichols give you, you know, more of the practical approach, but that's the overall. So everything there, that's why it's a passive use. The predominant use of this property is outdoor storage. So Sean, I saw you and now I don't see you anymore. Oh, there you are. So would you please? Yeah. Would you just please give them an overview of, of the processed? I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, your overview was pretty spot on, to be honest with you. The, the trucks come back, they offload into. A septic trailer. Uh, we have it pumped out every single day. The, the transport company comes in, pumps it out, takes it to a facility in Rhode Island. And that's really it.
So there's no, if you will, there's no storage of, of effluent on the property. It's literally just transported. Um, so I just want to make that clear.
Correct. There is no storage. It is transported every single day.
Any questions or concerns from the? From the board? With regard to that activity, because. When you get right down with that is. I, I mean, there's no telling what was the intention of, of the regulation that was enacted at the time of the bylaws regarding toilets. But, um, you know. My own personal understanding of septic operations by private pumping. Uh, interest in town is that. Uh, they also go out, outside the town in order to dispose of their, you know. Fill. As it were. And. The, you know. There's, I raised the question to town council if this would avail them with the ability to say, well, look, why can't I just have? Retaining tank. On-site at a location as well. But again, that goes and speaks to, once again, the use of this property for purposes of whether, you know, the use. Non-conforming or whatever the case might be. But there are. You know, always concerns about public health that have to be considered. So I just want to be sure that the board. Has any questions regarding the same.
And, and by the way, Mr. Breen, if I apologize for interrupting, this, the haulers do get licensed. Um, so if, I think if you were to store material there like that, you'd actually have to get some sort of a permit from the Board of Health. I don't think you can. Sean, can you? I, I, we have to, our hauler actually had to apply for a permit with the Board of Health for that very reason to ensure. The safety of the public health. But we, we would never store material on-site, never.
If I could speak real quick, in turn, Mr. Breen, to what you were saying. With other septic companies in town, you know, we do not store the septic. We do what they do. It's collected in our tank. That same day, we deliver it to a wastewater facility. So. In theory, it's the same, it's, it's the same. We're not asking for anything more than what. Any other residential, commercial, septic company. Does.
Michelle, Brendan, anything?
No, I think that Mr. Nichols did a fine job explaining their operation. I have no questions.
Yeah, none for me. I think I'm ready. Kind of discuss them.
Okay. So the usual process that we go through here is. You know, there's the public hearing, then we close it. So I'm just trying, before we close the public hearing. Are there any questions or issues? That. In this case, the board wants to bring. And I'm. I think that in this. Case, because we have to figure out the, the, the mechanics of, if you will, of. Of the, the process, because we have the two matters that are seemingly interchanged. We can just. Open up the conversation with regard to them. I think it. It's, it's this odd little situation where we almost have to make a determination on one before we can go back and deal with the second. But that doesn't necessarily. Follow in a, you know. Any usual. Procedural. Flow. So maybe I should start again. Brendan and Michelle, what are your thoughts on? The establishment that this was? I, again. It's the acronym. A lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming use, even though on its face it looked like a prohibited one at the time of the citation.
I'm fairly convinced. Curious what you're thinking and Brendan.
Yeah, I, I think the history has shown. Uh, that to be true, Bob. I'm just. I hung up on, you know, procedurally. The cart before the horse, chicken before the egg scenario here, uh, on, on what we have to, I guess. Vote on. First, if you will, I mean, if we do. Uh, uphold Jerry's. Decision. Just thinking technically cease and desist means cease and desist. They would need to cease and desist operation. But if we approve. The. Uh, second matter. Before us. Um, they would still need to go through process with the various town boards in order to get. That approval and that business license to operate. So. Wordings. Wise, um, a little. I guess confused on.
So I can, I think I might be able to help. So, um, the, 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 I think procedurally. What ends up happening is, is if you, you look at Jerry's letter and he says, listen, can you prove to me that you are an allowed use at the time? So because of that, I think that you have to say, you know, under Jerry's letter, when you, when you actually take into consideration the cease and desist. You hear the, you hear it and you say, okay, we, we absolutely know this is a prohibited use. However. Based on the second paragraph. Let us now say it is a prohibited use. We've determined it's a prohibited use under the bylaw. But before we can go to the final to decide whether or not there should be a cease and desist, we need to then consider. Whether or not this is a legally existing, non-conforming use. The other aspects relative to getting a business license. Sean, believe it or not, already has all that. So he has, you know, his, his hauler's permit. I mean, Sean, you can jump in if you need to, but he, he has all of those elements. So really what's necessary. Under the cease and desist order to resolve that is to kind of take now the special permit stuff. And say, okay, this really was a legally existing, non-conforming property. That this was an extension of that legally existing, non-conforming use and issue a special permit. That does two things and Mr. Breen, I think we had discussed it. It literally limits the property to the current operation. So you are basically saying, nobody better call this illegally existing, non-conforming use ever again. Because now we just granted that special permit to allow it to continue and that's it. So when somebody comes back to the property legitimately, if we were to want to change it, we have to come back to this board to change it, to do anything, basically. So therein lies your protections and then you actually put in place certain conditions. For example, you say, look. You can't ever store effluent on the property. Um, you know, you need to maintain your fencing, you need to maintain the property. I mean, you all know what the conditions are. You typically put in for a special permit. I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think that's kind of the process. You have to say, yes, it's, it's a prohibited use. If it came to our town now and it was on another property, it would be a prohibited use. However, there is evidence that it was allowed at the time. Then you consider a special permit. Then you go back to Jerry and you basically say pursuant to a second paragraph. We've determined that there isn't allowed use and the property is not required to cease and desist. Because if it is cease and desist. It's, then you tell them they can't operate. So it's like a weird, I think you hit it on the head. It's like a weird dynamic. And by the way, when I talked about it with Jonathan Eichman, your attorney. I said, I, I've been practicing law for thirty-six years, thirty of it in land use, never had this, never had anything like this before. And North C. It's an odd, it's an odd situation. But one that has a remedy that is very clear, i- is very clearly within your authority. But it is odd.
Thank you. Appreciate. Explanation.
And all well noted. Uh, the, the interesting thing about the, the letter and it's, it's unfortunate that, that. Cherry Neal is not available to us tonight, but the phrasing of it is, you know, cease, you know. It's an odd thing. I. I do agree that the progression of the analysis here and the application of the. Of. Of the, the supporting. History. Uh, affords the board the authority and I think would be. Uh, my, in my view, is, is, is appropriately. I would agree, I would. I would support. Viewing it as a. Non-conforming, illegally. Pre-existing, non-conforming use. The idea is that. The cease and desist. The showing. I'm, I'm not going to get hung up on it, but I think. That. In this case, regardless of whatever the use was, there was no, there was no permit for it. So that's the interesting question that I kind of noted earlier is that. I think a lot of businesses open and they start doing, they start performing activities. Some are just allowed under law and by law. And don't have to require any kind of a special permit, but they might. Start doing something that. Is common to their practice or their profession, but might be prohibited. In town and that would require, in this case, a special permit. Um, but again. I think for the practicality of this. This, the. The progression of. Consideration that counsel just made, I think is. Is reliable and reasonable. Um, for that purpose. What I. Would. I do have concerns about is that we've never had to deal with. Any kind of special permitting. Or. A business that was involved in this activity. So. My suggestion to them on this is that. There'd be no expansion. Of the activity on the property. Beyond what it is currently in that. Purpose. It's, I, I mean, I've. I don't know. I've never been behind the fence, so to speak, or inside the wall, so I don't know. Where the units are stored, where the tank is situated. Obviously, you're not going to go out and get a bigger tank. I mean, that would be an expansion, both literally and, um, actual, uh, actually. But. Um, you know, how many units? I mean. With any, with any grant of a special permit, if there's a change in the business activity. That exceeds the, the, um. The. The guides or, um. Protocols or limitations that are put on a special permit. That has to be, um. That requires that. User to come back before the board. Um, Brendan and Michelle. Any. Anything that you want to add if we were to grant the special permit for considerations, limitations, restrictions, et cetera. In this case, especially since it's one that we've never really had to deal with before. It may never have to deal with again.
Not about a condition. But I think I would want to note in our vote at least the uniqueness of the situation for future posterity.
Well, but they are entitled to have an understanding of how. How far, like what they can do. Now, if it is just simply nothing more than what they are doing, I apologize. Uh, if, but there's, the only way we would know that is to have. You know. Whether it's. Layout or. Sorry.
I have a layout because we have been working with Conservation Commission to lay it out area and to put in silt fence and stuff. So I have, I, I have the, an AS built from a year ago. Showing what they did and what the Conservation Commission wants us to continue to do. Um, and we're doing like replication areas because at some point, I, I don't even know if it was, if it was this particular user from way back. There was some encroachment into one of the wetland areas that they're going to restore. So I can deliver that and you can attach it and say, you can't, you know, this is what, what the Conservation Commission said you can do. That's all you can do. And it's, this is the area. Um, another condition would be that we never bring back, um, toilets that aren't cleaned, that we, we pump them off-site. You know, the things that we've told you we do. Um, that we're never going to change from should be conditions of that. So we're always going to do that. Um, and that may be important to you because I, I, I don't know, I, I think the common practice is to clean off-site. But you want to make sure of that. And if there's a violation, you want to be able to do something about it. So perhaps that condition. Um, would be something that would give this. Um, would be something that would give this board comfort. So you basically say you can't expand beyond that which you're doing. I delivered to you that plan from the Concom, which is historic. It's not like I'm doing something new. It's, it was done a month, two months ago, um, and that's been what the use is. And we maintain that fencing. So do you, do you know when you drive by, you see that big white fence we have? You know, you maintain that because you want to make sure that we, um. Basically maintain that visual block. Um, because it's outdoor storage essentially, um. And as far as, you know, the location of that, um, that. Septic trailer and we can show you, Sean, where is it exactly on the site?
So it's. You, you can't see it at all from the street. You can't even see anything from the street because the, the property kind of. Goes down, um, into the back in and around. So you don't, there's no visual of it whatsoever, but. Um. It, it, the, it, if you know what the property looks like, it's, it's in the middle, it's in the middle. Higher end of the yard, um. Of backyard, still not being ever seen whatsoever from the street at all. So you wouldn't see it when you drove by, but.
And it had to be far away from the, the wetland. So the wetland, the way this property works, it goes like this. And the wetlands are on the backside, so we have to stay out of a hundred foot for that too. So you can. Maybe those are, are, are conditions, Mr. Breen, Mr. Riley and Ms. Bodine that would be effective for you. Because what you want to make sure is we don't change, we don't change the use and that we say what we're doing. We, we, for lack of a better way of saying, we put our money where our mouths are and it's a condition of the special permit.
Okay, great. Um. Brendan, Michelle, um. Seems, I, again, I don't, I, I think they're entitled to have. Uh, as would anybody requesting a special permit and understanding of their. Um. Limitations or requirements. Which I think, uh. Easily could be. Um. Referenced in the, um. In an order for, in a grant of a special permit. Uh, but if there's anything else that you think, um, might be appropriate here in the immediate, um. Open to it. Again, I think. Uh, the layout. Uh, that counsel noted as being. Referenced will be. Attached and included. Um. Uh, Sean. How big is the tank? Is it, did you say how many gallons is it?
I think it's about, it's a little, it's, I think about nine thousand, Sean. Nine thousand gallons. So you know, to give you a frame of.
The existing tank size would be. Sure.
I was just going to give you a frame of reference to what it looked like. Little increase, okay.
Okay. Well. But, um. So Brendan, Michelle, is there anything that you can think of that? Uh, might be. Appropriate.
Yeah, I, I would just. Say outside of any. Local, federal. State regulations pertaining to. How. Waste water is. Handled, stored, um, at the tank. Does a tank need any? Annual inspections, Mr. Nichols, or? Um.
It does not, and we have gone, um, the Board of Health in town, um, we got the, um. Uh, we passed everything that they, you know, were looking for. We gave them everything that they needed and, and we got the green light. Um, that there are no health concerns, um. All permits. To, the only permit we need, um, and any septic haulers. Town by town is a septic hauler's permit, which we have. Um, the third party that comes in, takes the, pumps out that tank and, and takes it to Rhode Island, they have their own, um, haulers permits. And they have been provided to, um, North Reading. Health Department and. They have a permit to haul in town also, so. We have our stuff, they, they provide it there. So. Everybody got the green light on what we need for permitting and everything.
Okay, a- and as far as the, I mean, the service vehicles themselves that are. You know, cleaning them and maintaining them offsite, do they require any additional types of?
They, they do not because this is. No, they do not. This is not considered, um, the septic isn't considered hazardous. So there's no hazardous waste or anything like that. So there's no special permits other than a se- septic hauler's permit. That you need to do this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle.
Yeah, I mean, none that haven't already been discussed.
Great. Uh. Does anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a question about close the public hearing.
Second.
I, Brendan Riley, second.
Uh, all, uh, all in favor of closing the public hearing on the matter of, um. Special permitting.
Michelle, Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I, so, um. In the immediate, um. I believe that there's been an establishment that it was a legally, um. A legal, preexisting, nonconforming use. Uh, and while that. Still would have required a special permit via citation. Uh. Uh, that was granted was for prohibited use. And lacking the understanding of that, that matter, I think would be. Um, addressed by. The second matter. Uh, I do. Believe that. It would be appropriate to grant a special permit. In this case. Um. With a, an understanding that. The size and scope of the business. Uh, activity of flush. As it is being conducted now. Uh. Stay in place, not expanded without any. Further, uh, request to the board. Uh, and that would range from everything from. Offsite, uh, unit servicing. To, um. Uh. On premises, uh, transfer of. Of, um, content. And the, um. The requirement that the, uh. The units that are used for, uh, rental. Um. Be. Not only kept. Uh, be brought in and maintained as completely cleaned. Clean onsite. But also, um. Uh, located on the property in a place that. Uh, conservation. Uh, Conservation Commission and or the Board of Health thinks is. Um. Appropriate if not, uh. Required. Other than that, I, I think that. Will cover it and. Um. I would like to note. Two things. Um. Again. In this matter, I believe that. The history of the property. And having never had an insert in. A prior user. Uh, seek a special permit has only benefited the, um. Uh, the party that being flushed in the immediate because. Uh, that special, uh, had a, had a. A permitted use been established. Uh, that would not have been. And, uh. That would have basically taken it from being nonconforming to being permitted. And then that such it would have limited. All future activity. So in this case. Uh, whether flush, if the property at seventy five main were to turn over to a, a future, um. Party, um, whatever their activity was, even if it was the same as flush. Would, um, require, as is the case in other town properties, the need for a special permit from that. Occupant or, um, user. So I take confidence in that. Also, so, um. The other, I, I ended this is, is that. Um. This does not, again, open the, um. Uh, the opportunity for other. Businesses to come in because unless they can show a similar history of non, legally preexisting, nonconforming uses. Uh, on the property that that party may or, uh, may have access to or want to use. Um, they wouldn't be able to stand in the same shoes. As flush does, and I think was, um, I appreciated, uh, counsel making note that. She had never seen this situation before and I'll take her at her. Um, representation that, uh, counsel to the town had never really seen it as well. So. Uh, it's always interesting and. Uh, engaging to see a, a instance of, uh, a, a first impression. But the other thing I would like to say is that, um. The way in which flush and its employees. And agents conduct their business has gone a long way towards giving me. Um, the confidence to, um. To find that. Uh. It is. Simply a nonconforming use as opposed to a prohibitive one. The history of not having been cited. Or having any kind of violation, uh, speaks to, uh, the merit of supporting them. And I think that's reflected by the support that the town. Uh, has shown, uh, in the community for, for, um, the flush business. And their, um, their contributions in support of. Any number of town activities. Um, in which they. Give a discount if not a, um. Um, a, a gratu- a gratuity, um, for the use of their units. So, um, I think that that. Uh, has especially assisted them, uh, in their presentation to the board. And, um, very well might speak to a lot of reason why a special permit. Uh, should be or will be granted in the matter. So, um. That's how I see this for purposes of hearing. If Brendan or Michelle have anything else to add. Um. By all means, thank you.
I forgot nothing to add. I thought that was a good summary.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I have. Nothing to add further.
Okay, does, uh, anybody want to make a motion to close, um, uh, hearing on, uh, in this case, just the special permit matter?
I think we did.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Okay, uh. Well, we close it for the public hearing. Uh, with the close of the, um, consideration by the board, does anybody want to bring a motion with regard to? Uh. Grant of a special permit under section two hundred. Dash ten A. Um, for flush. Or in this case, seventy five Main Street.
I can, if everyone's helped me with the conditions, um. Uh, I, I move to approve the, um. To issue a special permit for seventy five Main Street regarding flush, uh, based on the history of, um. Nonconforming uses historically. With, uh, the following conditions. Uh, I think condition one was maintain, uh. The existing use, uh, infrastructure and footprint. Of the. Of the use.
Uh, to assist with the conditions, um, the, um. That the, um. That the activities. As I, as noted on the record, that being. Offsite, a off property, um. Uh, uh, servicing of the units before they return to the property will continue. That the, um, the trucks and or tank will be. Properly maintained and licensed. That, that, um. Uh, they'll. Bide by and, and comply with any and all, uh, health, um, health. And, uh, conservation requirements within the town. And, um. Also that the, uh, the noted, um. Doubting or, um. Uh, documentation that's being. Bided to the Conservation Commission will be. Included, uh, with this, um. Well. For purposes of understanding. Uh, again, um, the, um. The limitations and or. Uh, uh, regulations regarding the, um, activity. I think. I think that summarizes the conditions. Brendan, Michelle.
I think that was good, plus our normal standard ones.
I think that covers everything.
Okay, uh. Anybody want to second the motion?
I, Brendan Riley, second.
All in favor. The motion is set forth.
Sean, Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I, so with that, um, unanimous vote, uh, the special permit is being granted. In this case, uh, under section two hundred dash ten point A. Um, to, um. Seventy five Main Street. Uh, Reddick, North Reading, map twenty three parcel thirty one. Um. And, uh, for the business of Flush LLC. Uh, and it will stay with. Uh, Flush LLC. Uh, for as long as it occupies. That. Property specifically. Um, Kathy, if you could, could you just recite the, um. The usual, um, rat, um, timeline with regard to, um, the grant of a special permit?
I will send out, uh. Decision out to members. Once I get it back signed, stamped in with the town clerk. Twenty day appeal period will start. And after that. Period, you can record it and. Go for a business activity.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Um. So ha-. Having dealt with that, um, we now take a step back to the prior matter, which was. Uh, and appeal the decision of the Building Commission for the denial of the use of the property. In particular, at that time for toilets portable rental and leasing, the highway business to suit according to section two hundred dash thirty nine of the North Running zoning bylaws, um. So the, again, town clerk, if I'm wrong, the idea, the, um, I, um. The. Uh, the position taken by counsel on behalf of. This case flush and or seventy five main. Is that a cease and desist? Isn't. Appropriate because the underlying, there's been a made, there's been a showing. That the underlying use of the property, while at that time may have been seemingly. Have been. Uh, unpermitted or non, uh, or violated. There wasn't any permit or grant to it. However, that information wasn't known to the building inspector. Is that kind of a? Oh. Fair summary, counsel?
That, that was perfect because.
Michelle and. Yep, no, go ahead.
Seems good to me.
So, uh. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter and we can deliberate?
Uh, I, Brendan Riley, uh, move to close the public hearing.
Black and a.
Second, Michelle.
Yeah.
All in favor of closing the public hearing with regard to the, um, matter of the, uh, the, um. Uh, appeal of the decision of the Building Commission. In this matter.
Brendan Riley, I.
Bob, Bodie and I.
Barbara and I, so. Again, this has always been a consideration that we have to keep in mind. Um, I want to be clear that. Uh, at the time that the, uh, I agree that. Based upon what he knew at that time, uh, and made into his. As, as his continuing credit, uh, made a note, note to that within the, um, the, the notice submitted to the, um. To the party. That being, um, seven, uh, Mr. Nichols and or flush and or seventy five main. Uh, Inspector. Jerry O'Neil understood that. There was just no permit in place and not only was there no permit. Uh, but it, um, the activity he saw was. On its face without an understanding of the history of the property. Uh, a prohibited use, which I don't think counsel. Um, uh. Denied. So I just want to be. Uh. I want to get a clear understanding from the board by the other, uh, Brendan and Michelle, um. Do you think it's appropriate to? Um. Say that the cease and desist order. Um. Their their appeal should be granted or or. Should it be upheld and just? Um, addressed by what has already occurred, which is the grant of the uh. The special permit.
I almost think Bob, you'd want the. Appeal to Jerry's. Um. Findings to be granted. Based on what we. What we in council have discovered and. Um, the prior prior approval. That makes.
And while I would agree with that, it. I'm just want to be sure that this doesn't in any way. Stop the business from continuing. Seamlessly. And I don't.
I I don't think it, I don't think it would, I mean, if obviously we. We upheld Jerry's decisions, then I would think technically it. Technically it would. Because they would still have to go through the process to get their license, which does take. Some time. This way, I think would be just a seamless. Transition, if you will. I mean, technically, the way it looks.
Usually when people come to us for a special permit, they.
Yeah, they'd be operating without a license is basically. It the way it. Should. Should stand.
And. The idea here, is there any merit to? Counsel's position that. It, because the underlying. The 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 non, it was truly a nonconforming use. A legally permitted. Legally pre. Existing nonconforming. Use as opposed to. Uh, a prohibited one. Does that distinction change the uh? The citation inherently at its in itself so that. It's almost like an, I I mean, I might characterize it as an understandable error. And achieve the same end. Michelle. I'm not, it's just. I couldn't tell you. How the building inspector views this, but. Um. There has been. I mean, even within I, the saving grace in this is is the note within his citation showing. Unless. A showing can be made to the town and that showing has been made. Hence our grant of the special permit is to evidence that. So. Um. I'm implying to um. Grant their appeal. And while it seems that on its face, it's just reversing the decision. The. The grant of the appeal is. Based upon the further showing. As opposed to. Jerry being our.
So Bob, you're looking to overturn the decision of the building inspector? By granting their appeal? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what it it would do. And so, I mean. It's this, I. It seems a little disconcerting and uncomfortable, but um. I think they made. You know. There wasn't anything on record. But. That. But there. In that, it's. Has been courted this entire. Um. Situation. That it. Has led to, you know. A justified and uh um legitimate. Grant of a special permit. So. My, before we we haven't taken a vote on it, but I believe that the um. The appeal should be upheld and that the um. You wanted to cease and desist should have been uh should just um. Be to um should be dismissed. Or not. Imposed.
I, I know we closed the public hearing. But. I guess as a question. Now that we've resolved the ability for the business to continue operating. Is the applicant? Still pursuing the appeal of the cease and desist? Or once the special permit is recorded on the records? Can we carry over the building department's appeal to another hearing? And then if the applicant no longer is interested in pursuing. Um. Pursuing that appeal because now it's it's mooted because. You'll continue with operations. I mean, I think they were parallel track at a moment, and maybe we've now come back together and it's less relevant.
Do you want me, if I don't offer testimony, Mr. Bean, can I offer administrative assistance despite the fact the record's closed?
Um. If it's something that you may note of earlier. Uh, then yes. Because it's just assisting us in what the record has already established, which is what we would be delivering.
There's not no additional information, so it does have to be decided. Um, the the, there isn't necessarily an overturning or reversal, it's simply honoring what he. What was confined, so when you look at the cease and desist, he ceased, he asked for a cease and desist unless you could demonstrate. So in fact, you're almost, you you're. Honoring our appeal, right? Because you're saying, okay, you demonstrated what he asked for, so it's kind of a really nuanced finding. So the finding would be more of. The the use is prohibited. Pursuant to his second paragraph, there's been a showing of the allowable use, therefore the cease and desist would not apply. That's how you can do it, because I understand the concern about never wanting to say the building inspector was wrong, but he gave you the out. He said, if you guys find that there's an allowable use, then a cease and desist wouldn't apply. So you wouldn't uphold him necessarily, you would just kind of work within the confines of his. His cease and desist. So you'd say the cease, I think Mr. Bean actually said, or you may have Ms. Bodie, I don't know who, but. You would actually say. That the cease and desist doesn't apply because as he noted, there was proof satisfactory to the board that's allowable. That's how it would work. That way you tie it all together, but you don't say. Your opinion wasn't valid to him.
That's kind, uh, that's how I see it.
Yeah, I I think it's.
Because the showing was made based upon further showing.
Exactly, based upon further showing, that's a litigation statement, yes.
Yeah, I I was gonna say it's almost a, you know, point when we. Recognize that that the business was a. Um, preexisting. Yeah, legally nonconforming use. Um, it has a right to operate under that zoning ordinance, so it it's protected under those use rights. So we could just basically.
The out newsletter too.
Yeah, that's that's essentially our out to. To Jerry's um. Initial findings, he was not aware of that.
Okay, uh, thank you, counsel, um. Is it, uh, Michelle, is that um? Does that address your concerns?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, does uh anybody want to move to close the deliberation and and uh take this to um vote?
Uh, Brendan Riley, I.
Michelle.
Black and I.
Barbara and I, all in favor of closing the deliberations and taking the uh taking the matter to vote on the appeal.
Brendan Riley, I.
Paul Bodie and I.
Barbara and I, so um. Uh. With regard to the appeal, uh, all in favor of um. Let's see, uh. I would like to move that the appeal um of the building commit, the the. The appeal by um seventy five Main Street of the Building Commission's cease and desist order. Um, be allowed. Uh. With an uh. With an acknowledgement that. Uh. Based upon a showing uh after the fact that the. Activity. At seventy five Main Street was. A. Legal, legal. Legally pre-existing nonconforming use and not a prohibited one. Would anybody like to second that?
Black and I.
Thank you, all in favor.
Brendan Riley, I.
Michelle Bodie and I.
Barbara and I, uh, with that, the appeal. Is uh granted and um the cease and disorder, the cease and desist order. Um. Would have never, with as uh no effect on the business activities at seventy five Main Street. I think that pretty much closes all of the matters uh regarding. Uh, seventy five Main Street. Um. Thank you all for your um patience and courtesy on this. And again, um, just counsel, if you would, just be. Sure to get that. Additional copy to um our office for purposes of inclusion on the record.
I'll send it to Cathy right away. And thank you very much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I know how how much work this took and how much reading it took and how much involvement and um on behalf of flush, we we thank you.
Good luck with it and uh again, um. Uh, good luck with that, with the business going forward, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you and good night, everyone. Have a great holiday, I don't think I'll see you, but so have a great holiday. Take care.
Thank you.
Uh, with regard to the last item, uh, the minutes from our previous. Meeting, um, I had an opportunity to review them, um, I found them to be. Um. Um. Uh. Incis as well as descriptive of the uh. The matters that were before us on um September twelfth in particular. Um. Does anybody have any thoughts with regard to them?
That's good.
Yeah, they look good to me as well.
Um, Brendan, would anybody like to make a motion with regards to the entry of the minutes?
Uh, I vote to approve the minutes as drafted.
Uh, Brendan Riley, second.
All in favor?
Sean Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I, thank you all, so our next meeting again, uh, December nineteenth works.
Yes.
Yes, and I um, I filled out my paperwork to get reappointed, um. Brendan, do you plan to do the same?
Yeah, I did that, um, I saw the email, I must have missed it previously, so I I filled that out today.
Okay, so we at least get quorum until we add new members.
Yes, and I'll be doing the same, um Cathy, any, uh, I know that they're um. They're considering, I know you sent along that. Uh, party who was interested in joining the board. Uh, that's going, is that, are all the considerations of of these other applicants, is that this coming Monday's meeting of this?
As far as I know, they don't have any consideration.
Or when are they, when they next meet?
They don't have any considerations unless.
What's that again?
As far as I know, they don't have any considerations. For the zoning board unless you um tell them that you want them appointed.
Okay. All right, I thought they had the um, I thought there was a unilateral my my oversight, okay. Um. Uh. Okay, I'll um. I'll take a look. At that or speak to them. Uh, just a quick idea, Cathy, what is, what is the December agenda looking like?
So we have um one variance, um, we have two. Landscaping companies. That want to go in at three twenty five moon. Um. And there's that um. This one at two ninety nine. Continued. Landscaping company. Um. I think that's it.
Okay, um, if you could put two ninety nine. As the opening matter. Uh, let's see where it gets with um. His landlord, the situation. And um, we'll just move through the other matters as as best we can. Um. Thank you, everybody, I mean, it was a complex uh issue and you know, we had to cover a lot of things because um. This is an underlying concern with regard to, again, their activity there. But um. Uh, and Michelle, I mean, I just, uh, I had thought that it had gone to Michelle, Doug, um, Bodie and at Gmail previously, so.
No, I I have read that, I thought there was another one, and when you said letter, I was looking for an attachment, so I have.
Just for the record, uh, just um. Uh. It might have been a outgrowth of the prior meeting, not going forward because the other matters just didn't. Uh, present, but um. Um, KP. Again, since it really is only an opinion, uh. It it. It basically provided a guide guidance for us if we, as we did. Um. To step outside of. Uh. The usual request for a special permit and base it upon. A uh. I believe that it was a. Again, a non, you know, the legally pre-existing nonconforming years, but it. Uh. True legal nuance. Won't keep anybody any longer if anybody wants uh to make a motion to. Adjourn.
Right, um. So one ninety two Havel Street. We still haven't. Um, finalized that. Um, maybe it's going to be a moot point in. February, but um. And do you want me to take a crack at this decision, or do you want to do it, Bob? For seventy five main.
The, so one ninety two, um, if you want to send that out again, we'll pass it around and uh. As far as the decision with regard to seventy five main, drawing up the um. You um. The permit? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Sure. Because I have um, I have. Um. Notes from my car, uh, from my conversations with. Counsel, and I think I have a pretty good idea of. Um. The board, and again Brendan and Michelle, if anything comes to mind. Um. With regard to it, I think uh. It's a broad range because we're basically telling them to continue business as they're doing business, but we have a, you know, we only have a. These meetings and what they tell us that they're doing, so. It's kind of in a little bit of a um. It's a broad, it's going to have a broad breadth. Good and bad. But uh, yes Cathy, I'll I'll. I'll take that and get it to you and then you can. Move it around, how's that? Um, anybody else, anything else? If anybody, if we're done, uh, anybody wants to make a motion, we'll close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Brendan Riley, second.
Second, all all in favor.
This one we're Johnny on the spot for, Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I, thank you all. I have a very pleasant Thanksgiving. Thank you for your time tonight and um. Uh, don't hesitate to reach out. Thanks so much for this. Appreciate it.